Approve a payment to the city of Burlington, approve a payment to Burlington Water Works, approve a payment to Des Moines County Regional Waste Commission, approve a payment to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and the claims that's presented in an amount of $172,240.20 breaks down to the general fund $62,723.4, road use $5,308.16, Tiff Capital Projects[29.84][29.84]$70.91, LMI set aside $135, Tiff debt service $5,000, 2011 general obligation bond $44,321.21, water $37,085.79, sewer $10,127.61, medical insurance reserve $3,840.90, Lex account[59.55][59.55]$119.36, and the Fourth of July celebration $3,029.22. Any discussion?
Your honor, I'd like to pull number two just for a brief discussion about it later. Could we move that down to the item one that you moved earlier?
Sure. Roll call.
Stewart, aye. Lee's?
Aye.
Brownner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Pay reports. Item number one is the presentation of payments to various organizations for the sale of the Fourth of July raffle tickets. Rod, I'll turn it over to you and I'll present the checks.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd like to do that and then just make a few other comments about the Fourth of July before we move on if you wouldn't mind. So, as most of you know, every year we offer the chance for clubs, groups, and organizations to sell our raffle tickets and then we split that money with them 50/50. We've got a few people that did that again this year, a total of $2,650 actually that we're going to pay out to these organizations. And we've invited everybody to come tonight. I don't think everybody showed up, but some have. And we'll start at the bottom and work up with the Des Moines County Genealogical Society, or however you pronounce that word. They get a check for $60. Yeah, I wasn't, not even going to say it. And then we have the West Burlington Volunteer Firefighters Association. They get a check for $90.
Well, Brad, you can give it to them. I'll give it to them. Thanks.
We have the West Burlington Lions Club. They're going to receive a check for $150.
Didn't recognize anybody, so we'll just put that back in the car.
And we have the Burlington West Burlington Optimists Club receiving a check for $165.
I'll take that one.
I was the president a couple of years ago.
How much was that?
$165.
I was going to say, there's three of you here.
And again, we do this on purpose and present them this way hopefully that people realize that when we're out hounding the streets for donations and requests for help that there's a lot of groups and clubs and organizations that make money off of this day. And so, that's one of the reasons we like to do it this way. St. Paul's Church is going to receive a check for $220.
You want that one too, Mr. Givern?
I can pass it along.
That'd give you a bonus of at least $385 so far.
Who's counting?
I saw the pastor off the yard today.
I'm sorry. And West Burlington Post Prom this year, they get a check for $561 bucks. $561, so.
Good deal.
That's a pretty good deal. That's the most of post proms ever got involved with selling their raffle tickets. And then we have the West Burlington Girls Little League. They get a check for $590. So, there's Kelly. Yeah, you probably could have. We just could have passed them up and down.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then to the group that sold the tickets that day downtown here in Mandabooth from 6:00 AM till 8:00 PM, by the way. 6:00 AM till 8:00 PM, let me say. They started at 6:00 AM in front of the fire department. They quit at 8:00 o'clock here. That group's the West Burlington Alumni Association, and they get a check for $814, which is a little bit less than they've gotten the last two years, but that's because it was hot and attendance was down. But, anyway, so that's those checks. And we want to thank all those clubs and groups and organizations for helping us that day. We had a wonderful Fourth of July celebration. I want to make a few comments about it. I was actually hoping Mr. West would be in town. I'd have him write the letter for me because I'm not very good at that kind of stuff. But, I did sit down about quarter after five today and made a few notes. And I just need everybody to realize from the biggest contributor, Deary's, until the littlest contributor, the little old lady buys one $2 raffle ticket. That's what makes this day work and brings in all this money and allow us to do these things. From Chip at the radio station who sold over 1,000 tickets, to the bank and the bakery that let us use their parking lots, to Levine's that donates the trash containers, and to the Casey's, little manager, little girl down at Casey's who said that morning when I snuck down there for coffee, said if there's anything we can do to help, just let us know. And to the various, of course, citizens that have their streets and houses and their housing area disrupted by our day's events. It takes all those people agreeing to work together to make this thing work. And, you know, our day, that day, our day starts normally at 5:00 AM when I get up here and the public works guys are already working. And this year we had Rod and Lyle and John all up here and they were moving picnic tables and putting up the barricades. And I looked down the street. You could tell the activity was starting down at the firehouse. And pretty soon Jamie was out here on the street. He was setting up what turned out to be our largest craft show we've had to date. There was a lot of people there. If you didn't see that, that was quite a display of stuff. And then right after that, I noticed the public works guys, they were busy working. Now then they were setting out all the raffle stuff and the auction stuff and distributing the garbage cans and all the et cetera other stuff that goes on that day. And sometime along there Kelly showed up and pretty soon she's out there organizing the raffle and the auction stuff. And daughter Madison's helping her. And Councilman Raleigh then at some time also showed up. He jumps on a golf cart and spends the next two or three hours hauling people around and getting them to and from the pancake breakfast. And I'll look over here underneath the tent and Councilman West is over there. He's doing his final little things to his praise service and getting that stuff done and wondering why I'd stolen one of his tables, by the way. But, that was something we worked out. A little quick view of the area and I see the hot rod guys, the car show people are over there. Vehicles are starting to arrive and the Broadway people are setting up. And our various food vendors up and down the row are starting to show. And, you know, that included, you know, this year the Lions, I mean, a list of those. What am I doing? The Lions, the Fine Arts Boosters, the Post Prom Committee, a Boy Scout troop, a church group, and two baseball teams. All had food or drink booths up and down that line, which I, again, that's clubs and organizations that that day helps out and helps run. So, at some point here, and Frank needs to know this, but some point about this time of the morning, Lieutenant Hand, I still want to call him Officer Hand, but it's now Lieutenant Hand, comes up to me to let me know that he's on duty that day and make sure that I know he's got Alex's old number and that he'll be here all day. It was kind of comforting to know that. And it's just another example of how everybody, and I say this and preach this, but it's true, how everybody chips in to make that day happen. Of course, now it's 10:30 and Mr. West's praise and prayer service is going and it's a great event. Ned Frye, a local man, gives a speech. And for the first time ever, we had the Burlington Municipal Band playing in the city of West Burlington, which was kind of a cool thing. And you got, you jump for fun. People are set up. St. Paul's, and then the West Burlington Activity Group was here with all their kids' games. That's all going on by now. Bingo had started in the basement. Pretty soon we had a movie here in City Hall that day. Of course, later on, we had the karaoke contest and the talent show and those people, Sherry Mitchell, Scott Michael from 93.5, Miss Iowa was here, Mariah Carey, and of course, our karaoke girl Rena, all doing their stuff and all just doing their jobs without any need of me having to babysit them or help them, actually. Of course, then we had council ladies, Lees and Stewart. And by the way, I also seen Leslie over there helping do that bicycle thing along with Bickle's Bicycle Shop today. They was getting ready for their bike races. These ladies not only did a great job of running the bike races, but they also ran the parades along with some help from Deb Trossel and Denise Michelson. Speaking of parades, of course, then it was about 4:00 and it was time to get the candy from City Hall and get out to the parade where I got to have the honor of driving our grand marshal that day, Wilma Wagaman, who will turn 100 years old next week. And it was a wonderful parade, by the way. Girls with lots of people, but it sure was hot. Nothing we could do about that part of it. About then it was 6:00. It was time to get back up here. We had to give away our karaoke winners. We had to give our parade winners away. And we did all that. Then we turned the stage over to cross country, the band. About then final say, our evening band showed up and I had to get them over to the Broadway who had donated their evening meal for them. And we thanked them for that. At 8:00, of course, we had to do some announcements, do an auction, do a raffle, do the schools' raffle, get all that done. At 8:30, we turned the band loose and we were out. We kind of tried to relax a little bit and wait for the 10-01 fireworks. And you all know the rest of that story. At 11:35, the band was done. We paid them. We start closing up the street and the rest is all history. It was a wonderful day. We had a good Fourth of July celebration. Besides all those people above that need to be thanked, I need to thank, of course, Councilman Raleigh for his endless running around seeking donations and help with things that day. And again, to the public works guys for all the things they did. Not only the things I mentioned before, but they was up here the day before setting up the stage. And they did a great job without Randy being here. They just knew what to do and they got it done. And of course, to the police for their help and support throughout the day, and as it turned out, evening. And of course, to all the staff here at City Hall that do the countless things that make this day happen. Leslie and her helper who are always behind the scenes working on letters and thank yous and keeping track of all the monies. And Kelly who was in late Tuesday night and decorated the stage and did all the ordering and shopping for the things we need. And of course, Katie, your helper who made sure we had all the signs and posters done. There's numerous others, but you get the idea. And I've talked long enough. Anyhow, just a big thank you to everybody and also to the mayor and city administrator for helping, participating, and allowing me to run this event. Thanks.
And I'd like to make one comment. I want to thank everybody out there as far as business and even the citizens of West Burlington who donated money and gifts and that stuff in there. And I want to appreciate Rod and for organizing everything else and did a nice job this year, even though of the incident at the end. So, and I thank everybody.
Any other comments? I want to thank both of you guys for doing this hard work that you do every year. It really is. I don't get to come up as often as I like because it seems like we always have 100 people in our house.
Yeah, a lot of people this year, I noticed.
Anyway, anything else for that part of finance? We've got something else on here. Greater Burlington Partnership, 2012 Small Business Report. I don't think I know you.
Sheila, I'm a developed level workforce specialist for Greater Burlington Partnership.
Okay. All right. I'll see you to come, Sheila.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, right there would be fine.
I do want to thank you for letting us have the time tonight to present this. Each year we do the Small Business Report. It's part of our Business Retention and Expansion Committee that does this report. It goes out and makes the visits each year. Before I start explaining the reports here, I'd like to just take it meant to say, what is a small business? Because that's what we're actually surveying. Well, if you look at the federal government, a small business can be a multitude of things. It's basically independently owned and operated and is organized for a profit. But, the size of it can be based on various criteria, anywhere from one employee to 500 or more employees. So, when we talk about our Small Business Report, we're talking about talking to the mom and pop shop that have one or two employees, all the way up to, say, Hy-Vee, who has a multitude of employees. So, there's a good mix in here. The one thing we do not include is manufacturers. We try to do them separately in the fall. They have a little bit different as far as interesting criteria, what makes a good business area for them. We do this report. We compile it based off visits to chamber members. And the visits are usually made from February to May. We have a standard questionnaire that we take out and then I compile all the data and we get the trends out of that. So, this year we had seven staff members and seven volunteers from our Business Retention and Expansion Committee make 70 visits to businesses. That is a record for us. We've been doing this a little over four years in this format. So, you figure we've touched about 240 different businesses in that timeframe. If you want to look at the first page, I'll just draw your attention to the fact that there's a lot of positives on that page. Increased sales, increased revenue, increased needs and employment, and even some talk of expansions and renovations. So, all of those are positive things we were seeing this spring. The one negative on this page is not a new area. It's our workforce rating. And we've been seeing this for a few years. As unemployment declines, as the jobs pick up in this area, we see that obviously the availability of workers declines. And along with that, so does the quality and the stability. It's hard to find the skill sets you need in the workforce that's available out there. And sometimes it's just hard to find somebody who actually wants to show up to work every day or can pass the drug test. So, the one thing I can say about that is we're not alone. I hear this all across the country as I go to different conferences, that workforce and the skill sets we need are an area of concern. The second page, I think, gives you the biggest positive in that so much is happening with technology. I heard a lot about the Internet and social media and how people plan to use it either to do business or for marketing strategies. So, that is a new upcoming piece of business that a lot of these smaller firms are starting to look into. The other thing is, of course, new technology means new products, new production systems, ways to save costs. So, there's a lot of that going on out there, too. So, lots of positives we heard as far as products and systems. The third page, we did something different this year. We actually trended what we had seen for the last four years. So, we put together to see, are we up, down? You know, how are different areas of community service rated? And you can see police protection, fire, ambulance, healthcare, all of those continue to get very high marks. So, great across the board. And this is all of Des Moines County. So, we're talking, you know, all the cities around. We do see a little struggle with streetscapes and local streets, but those have been improving. So, that's a positive trend for us. And we see that going up. And of course, airline service has just climbed continually since Air Choice One went in. So, a big positive there. We hear a lot of good feedback on Air Choice One. Other than that, you can take a look. Property taxes is our lowest, but I've yet to find anybody who wants to say, yeah, they treat me right. My taxes are fair. I pay, I already don't pay enough, you know. So, that one is one we don't worry too much about. The one thing I draw your attention here, too, that doesn't really stand out a lot, but we heard a lot of comments about it, is housing. It was probably, well, I know it was. It got the most comments of anything for community services. And the comments were for renting or for buying in that it's hard to find housing. It's a very difficult, whether you want to rent or whether you want to buy, there's not a lot available. And if there is, it's typically at the low end or at the high end. There's not a lot of mid housing for new professional people coming to town. I had one of our businesses tell me that when they bring in new professionals, they sometimes live in a hotel for two to eight weeks before they find housing. We actually have one in our office living in a hotel right now because they have come to town and have not been able to find housing yet. So, it is a concern. And like I said, we heard it, especially if I talked to someone who was new to the community and had been trying to find a house. So, we do have a little bit of a problem there on a housing shortage, but hopefully there'll be some things coming along to help with that. The last page is just something that we added this year to share with our Small Business Members and everyone else. We have a new tool at Greater Burlington Partnership. This tool is on our website. It's called Greater Burlington Headlight. It has a lot of different data in it and it's in graph forms. So, it has data from U.S. Census Bureau, Labor Statistics, all that kind of stuff. So, if you need any of that kind of data in your daily business, I encourage you to go out there and use these charts. They're very user friendly. There's drop-down boxes. And they're also very easy to just copy and paste into a document or something, a presentation that you might have. So, if you want to take a moment sometime to check that out, maybe you'll find there's a use for you as well as for us in that. That's really all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sheila, back to the, and this is my own personal opinion on the reason why there's a good labor pool anymore. I think it's directly tied to the wages.
As far as not being able to find workers?
Yeah. If the companies would start paying better livable wages, they might have people that want to stick around. And I hear this, you know, the people are coming into manufacturing, you know, or whatever. They want to have three, four weeks off. They don't want to work. A five-day work week. Well, you know, if I was 25 years old, too, and would have to lay in welding smoke for 40 hours a week and be paid half of what the guy's getting paid next to me, I wouldn't want to work it either. That's, I think it ties directly to the labor, to the wage issue. And it also ties directly to that we need to start steering kids in school towards trades. Not everybody is a four-year college graduate or can be.
Very true.
We need to start, in high schools, even, probably even starting middle school, start saying, okay, you know, think about what you might want to do. And, you know, you're not going to be a lawyer. Not everybody's going to be a brain surgeon. But, there's the technology that is short on workforce. There's manufacturing that's still available. And we need to start steering kids that way.
Absolutely. We are trying to do a little bit of that. We've got a career exploration day going with our high schools. We've done one this year and we're going to do another. And what we're trying to do is just keep our local students here when they graduate, whether they stay here out of school. We're trying to make them aware of what jobs are in the community and what skills are needed for those, whether it's straight out of school, whether it's a little bit of technical school, SEC, whatever it might be, or a four-year degree. So, we are trying to make students more aware of the various jobs that are available in the communities to work with them. And I actually have a program for interns, which are all your college students that are here this summer working. I'm actually meeting them at the Broadway later on and that wasn't planned. I had originally thought I was meeting you guys next week. So, it wasn't planned. It turned out that way. But, they have all been out at Big River Resources taking a tour. And so, what we're trying to do is if they're from this area or they're in this area working, get them to feel welcome and a community involvement and feel like it's somewhere they want to come back to and live. So, we are working on a few things. Wages are always important. People want to make a good living, you know, so.
I think the community college needs to have a, you know, some type of involvement in that, too, to where, you know, there's, from what I've seen in the last few years, the community college is gearing more towards a four-year college, trying to make everybody go to get that four-year degree. And that's just not there. They need to be, you know, working on the two-year degrees and the technical degrees and that kind of stuff. And that's just my own personal opinion. But, it all boils back down to the wages that are being paid. I mean, people are making half of what they were 10 years ago. That's not right. Anyone else?
I have to agree with you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else for finance?
Randy's getting better.
Besides that, no, I haven't. I talked to a few of them. Everything seemed like it was going pretty good this week. And, of course, Randy, I think he's got another week or week and a half where he's coming back. Besides that, I think everything's been going pretty good unless in Tan has something.
I don't.
Do I have anything for streets? Public safety?
I don't have anything, but our chiefs are here.
I just have a couple of small things. I was over at the street shop airing up my tires. And I look over and I see two squad cars. So, I'll probably bring next to you old squad cars. It was Sergeant Ryan's old squad car. And I believe the other one was the one the city used to use. They're just sitting over there backed in there. And I'm probably going to bring to you next time to either put them on govdeals.com or to, we also have the found property, the bicycles. They should be ready for auction after July 25th or see what we can do about auctioning off that. I'm going to check into a couple of things on that. Another thing that we've been talking is the police department. Our cell phones that we have seized and did search warrant on have increased tremendously over the past five years. We have been having Indian Hills do it, but they're getting a backlog because just like what we're doing, all the other police departments across the state of Iowa are doing it. Talking with Officer Covert and Officer Boner and Lieutenant Hand that does most of our felony cases. We had found a forensic data recovery certification class that's coming up in the late August for, get somebody here certified so it can be done in-house to help with the criminal investigation. The most logical person to probably put to that would be our IT specialist, Brad Newberry. And the cost is about $695, but that also comes with hardware and software. So, and the training to be able to do that. I just want to kind of put that out to you before so you can think about it through the week. So, if you have any questions, we'll be able, I'll be able to answer them.
Buildings first. Borgy has started construction on the new break room on the front side of their building. The Klein Center, I've been dealing with architects and engineers on ADA issues on the entire Klein Center. Bridgeway, the building remodel has been completed. Wally Day is starting the fourth foundation of his condos. The other one that's in, under construction now, has all been framed in with the roof and they're getting ready to start the firewall separation. Derry Brothers has started a storage building and parking improvements underway on the east side of their building. Still handling a numerous amount of complaints. On the court side, we've got two working court cases. We have one waiting to be served and we have two pending. And today and yesterday, I worked with on the new hospital project. I've been working with the architect on some site issues, which are drains, water for the fire hydrants, and some electrical issues that are buried underground. It has to be moved before the building can start. On the fireside, we're working with FEMA on the safety grant that we were approved. We got to write, what do I want to say? We have to write job descriptions of each one and how it's going to be done and get it approved by FEMA prior to bringing it back to the council for approval. We did get a nice thank you letter from J&amp;M Display on the Fourth of July response. And our driver operator aerial certification class begins this week and they test out September 29th.
Anything for the chiefs?
I don't have anything. And Randy's not here.
Anything major going on?
No, everything's working pretty well.
Sanitation? Dan's not here. Got anything for sanitation? Lack of water? It's still flowing. Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council matters that we did discuss or didn't discuss? I'm sorry, other staff report. Kelly, you got anything?
No, I'm fine.
Leslie, you got anything?
You could mention, I never thought about this one. Chief was talking. We could mention that band burn that you sent out to us.
Yeah, the burn ban. I thought he was going to say, yeah, as a...
That email you sent us today about the band burn, could you mention that?
Oh, the burn ban?
I got it written down.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a burn ban in effect now for Des Moines County. All the fire chiefs basically voted on it today. And it is in place. We're not going to issue any burn permits or anything like that until it gets lifted. Perhaps cited one individual for open burning here the last week and it went to court and it was fine today.
But, you can still barbecue.
Or if you want to sit out by your pit and burn.
And it said you could use your outdoor fire pits and stuff and stuff. But, I just thought we had to mention that.
Yeah, I've never even thought about that.
No, I didn't.
I had it written down here and then I forgot.
Came at the end of the day and I've been so busy that it just, I wanted to get it out to you guys and...
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council matters we haven't discussed yet or not on the agenda? Anything? All right. Well, new business, which is item number two from the consent agenda.
And because when... And because we're not supposed to talk about things on the consent agenda, I was trying to obey the rules. I don't have any problem with this and plan to vote for it. However, we've never had that, I've never at least had that discussion with you. I've had it with Alex in the past and would have it with Frank in the future, that I never liked Alex and Frank to be gone same time. And I'd had that, and Frank's heard that before. I've had that talk with Alex before about being concerned about him and Frank both going somewhere or both being gone out of town overnight. Just because we're a small town and we've only got so many people, I worry about that. That's my concern with, with the response to fires, lately only being like seven people during the daytime, and you're probably taking three of them with you. I just have a concern about that. And thought I needed to voice it. Now, I understand the training, I'm all for it, so on and so forth, but I guess in the future, I'd sure like to see you figure out some way not to, to take that many core people and be gone, out of town. And if you want to do a retreat, which I wish we could do such things, but we can't legally, but, you know, if you want to do the retreat, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah.
I just hate that you're going to, you're taking the core of the fire department, going to be in Dubuque, Iowa for a couple of days.
Right. If we were a paid fire department, I'd want to take all the officers and do the actings and those kind of things.
Yeah.
The problem is with volunteers, when you roll the dice, when the call comes in, it's a roll of the dice. We don't know.
Yeah, I know.
However, with the lineup that's at this conference, those guys are the cutting edge that started the incident command system. Brunisini from Arizona, from Phoenix, that was the chief there for 30 years. He was the first one that even adopted the incident command system, and that's where the U.S. Forestry Service and all that took it from. And some of these other guys that are here, I think it'll be phenomenal for the officers to listen to them.
I have no doubt. I just, I've just never had that discussion with you.
We're still leaving one battalion chief, three captains, and 20-some firefighters here.
But, but most of them are not your core people that are showing up to fight daytime fires. That's what scares me. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand.
So, and you and I talked about it just before this afternoon a little bit there, and do you have the names that I asked that, who are those?
We got Daryl Levine, Jesse Logan, Brian Wright, Todd Van Scoy, Justin Pryor, Paul Barnett, Sean Ryan, Mike Stewart.
Okay, and then how many people on the ladder truck?
That's the drivers of the area.
And the drivers, and they're taken care of. Are we kind of guarantee that these people will be setting to make sure that they're going to be around?
They'll be around, but I can't guarantee they can respond.
Well, I know, most, you know, most of it, but I just knew that since you four guys are gone, if that is going to be arranged, that they need to be a little bit closer at that time.
Well, there's not only that weekend, but there's other weekends that we're going to be short during the summer months into September, that they have to, if they can, by all means come.
And the only reason why I brought that up, I mean, I just don't want an incident to happen that it'll come down.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is, we're doing the mutual aid and that kind of thing to meet NFPA standards. So even if, if we had 18 people show up on the scene, I'm still calling mutual aid for at least two more companies because of meeting the standards. And in the hot weather and the cold weather, the people aren't going to last that long.
Yeah. Because Rod's, Rod's right, is because we've always asked Alex, you know, to make sure that we have somebody here at that time.
And I didn't know you and Councilman Raleigh talked about it. I just didn't have time to get up here today.
Well, that was-
Just to voice my concern that in the future, if you could, it'd be a lot more comfortable if we didn't have quite so many leaders gone out of town overnight.
And the only reason why we're doing that is just because of the caliber of the people that I want them to see.
Understand. And I plan to vote for it, as I said from the beginning.
Which you did make a-
That's the reason why, if it wasn't, if we didn't have the caliber of people there that were going to talk those two days, I probably wouldn't let that many officers go.
Which you did make a statement that one may not be leaving.
Paul Barnett's got to get approval from the state to leave, and he can't get that without, up until about 30 days before, and he's not a guarantee.
Okay.
So he may be back depending on if the state will allow him to leave or not, or have the one Friday off.
Anyhow, I'll make a motion to approve the attendance at the tri-state conference by the chiefs Barnett, Ryan, Stewart, and Himes.
I support it.
Motionless support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stewart, please.
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Carrie. Item number two is to consider a second reading and ordinance amending auctioneer licensing.
Support.
With support. Any discussion? Have we heard from anybody at all?
No.
Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Carrie. Item number three is to consider a resolution amending the city's master fee schedule for various city services. This is the one we pulled off last week to give you a chance to look it over, because there was some stuff at it, and got any questions on it.
Motion to approve.
Support. Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Carrie. Item number four is consider a resolution accepting grant from the Homeland Security Safer Grant Program in the amount of $523,000.30. It's a four-year grant. It's going to be spread over, as you can see in the resolution, for recruitment, retention, training reimbursement, non-uniform clothing, recruitment advertisement, personal protective gear, higher education stipend, officer stipend, firefighter stipend, physicals, and grant writing fee.
I, before I go and vote on this, there is a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Dan, we're not obligated in any way of anything after this grants?
The way I understand it from the chief was, no, that four years is up, the grant goes away. We're not obligated to keep the wage rates or whatever we set them at. They go back to whatever the wage rates were as of before the grant.
Correct.
Correct.
Do you have another one?
No.
Okay.
My mind went.
Okay. I just said two.
I know, I did have two.
I just didn't want to-
Oh. Yeah, I already received those. The other ones was the information that I wanted, and Mike said he's going to email me that and everything. Okay.
This is just, this is just basically to supplement our people, to bring their wages up, to give, offer them some college courses. Instead of putting new recruits in, hand-me-down bunker gear, they get all brand-new, from coat to helmet. Leslie and I have been working on the wages and things, and it's a few dollar an hour raise is what it turns out to be. We are going to sign, we're going to have every member sign, I'm going to put something together that says at the end of the four-year grant, if it's not renewed or whatever, that it goes back to wherever the city's budget is for wages is where we fall back to.
Well, and the other thing I wanted it for is just a case, if they came back on us and that I had-
No, that's why I want to put it in writing.
Information and that, because the only thing I see it says, therefore, the city council has reviewed, and I hadn't agreed, and I haven't reviewed it, so, and I didn't get any information of it.
Yeah. We have 90 days. Each one of those sections that you have where the money's at, each one of those sections, we have to put together a complete job description, if it takes one, or a policy of how it's going to get spent, where it's going to go. We have to do monthly and quarterly reports back to FEMA where the money's being spent, and that kind of thing. And all that has to be approved by FEMA before I can come back to you after this vote and say, this is the way it's going to be distributed. This is what FEMA has approved. The city has no money invested, but this is the breakdown. And I want to get that to you at least a week or two ahead of time, so you guys have time to look at them and evaluate it of what FEMA has approved for us, and then it takes off from there.
Mainly a lot of this stuff was for new recruiting, too.
Modern is for new recruiting, except for the non-uniform clothing award. That is for station gear, t-shirts. It was taken out of the budget this year due to the cuts, so we put it into the grant so we could do that. The awards program, same thing. The guys that get their certifications and things, we do that award. PPE, that's just for new recruits. The officer wages gets them up for everything that they're doing. Same with the firefighters. The physicals for new recruits doesn't come out of our budget. We have to change that. We have to draw blood now, and we have to get x-rays, chest x-rays every other year, and a few things to meet the NFPA standards and those kind of things. So it's an all-around win-win.
Well, it's a, FEMA did offer, and I thank the taxpayers that's paying for this, too.
Leslie, are you okay with all this and how this is going to work and so on and so forth, or are you?
I'm still waiting for the details, too, when they, when they get their proposal together. But he said they still have to do their proposal when they break down, so.
Will, will you have to be involved with those monthly or quarterly reports or whatever, too, the chief just mentioned?
Well, I'll have to help get, pull those reports together, yes, and pull the numbers.
Okay.
I think, wasn't Skylar going to be in charge of kind of putting those reports?
Yeah, he's the one that's putting them all together. He's running them through Dan, so Dan at least sees them, and if he wants to make any corrections, and then we'll kick them to FEMA. FEMA will screen them, and they'll either make the corrections and say, no, we can't do this, we have to do this, or they'll wave the wand and send it back with approval.
And the wages, we've been looking at, kind of run the numbers and see what the benefits would be and what they'd have to hold back for that.
We're going to try to, try to submit everything around August 10th is our plan. We have 90 days to get this thing done. That gives us another 60 days. If they kick some things back that we can rewrite and those kind of things, and get it back to them.
And the other thing is, is that you definitely should thank Skylar for writing this up. He did a nice job.
Him and I have put a ton of work in this thing, and Mike and Sean have been doing the proof readings and those kind of things, making sure it makes sense. After you read it and put it together for so long, it all runs together. You've got to have a new set of eyes putting this together. Along while we're talking with grants, the AFG grant that we've applied for, we did open the bumper bids today for the new pumper for the AFG grant. We've met all the criteria needed for the AFG grant that we've applied for, so we're just sitting on it now. But we're also applying for the 2012 grant. We'll talk about that. I got a memo coming out. I need some guidance on it from the governing body, probably next meeting. And there's one, one area I want you to look at and just tell me yea or nay, or what your feelings are before we proceed on, because that has to be filed by the 16th of August.
Are we going to get any information before that?
Huh?
Will we get any information before that?
I'll have a, I'll have a, I'll have a memo out to you.
I appreciate it, instead of being here at the meeting and reading it.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the governing body of the city of West Burlington, Iowa to accept grant funds under the FEMA Department of Safer Grant Program for year 2011 in the amount of $523,430.
I thought you were going to read all 2,600 pages.
It was close. But I shortened it.
I'm sorry.
Motionless support. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Please?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Abstain.
Motion passed. Item number five is to consider setting a public hearing to update the public on the status of a Bridgeway CDBG project for August 1st at 6:00 PM.
I'll move.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please.
Carrie. No old business. Anyone wishing to address the council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Things adjourned.
Support.
Support.
Always.